Let's call the November 28th council meeting to order. Start off with roll call to my left.
Troy Taber, council member.
Sherri Geisler, council member.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Chris Hestes, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangus, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Deiter, city administrator.
Item three is invocation. Chief, is there anybody here this? Chris, would you be so willing?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, we've just celebrated our Thanksgiving and we are so blessed as a community and members here to serve our city in this way. Please bless everyone here tonight and give us the wisdom to make good decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? There being none, we'll move on to the acceptance of the agenda. I don't see any additional agenda items this evening, is that correct? The packets were updated, I saw that.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Sherri, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. We have a citizen request. Peace Lutheran, are they here?
I don't believe Ken's here, but this is like, I don't know, the 15th, 16th, 17th year that they have requested to shoot Class C fireworks off on New Year's Eve at the church. And they always do check with the fire department on...
Mr. Mayor, I would move to permit the Peace Lutheran Church to shoot fireworks on December 31 from 11:45 to 12:45 as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Chris. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight. We have a presentation this evening. Stuart, you are up.
Could I have the PowerPoint, please? Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be with you again this evening. I know we discussed many of these topics in depth last night. I'm Stuart Gary, fire practice principal for City Gate Associates. I did your fire protection master plan study along with my team the last few months. Here tonight to give you the headlines and the go-forward steps for this council, community, and fire department. And I'd like to start off by saying you're to be committed for conducting a fire services master plan. As a growing, evolving community, this is a local control issue and communities are well-served when they give careful, thoughtful consideration to the design of their fire services. And I would like to start off with the policy choices to remind everyone listening to this presentation that in the United States, believe it or not, as much as the federal government likes to tell us what to do, there are no federal or state standards for the provisions of fire or ambulance services. No response time per forma. It is a local control issue. To protect your community, understand the risks to be protected, the ability to pay to protect those risks with some level of fire and ambulance services. However, once you decide to provide services at all, the federal and state governments do enter the side door and tell you how to do it and to do it with the safety of the men and women serving the public in mind. So fire services as law enforcement and ambulance has gotten very expensive as the safety standards to be compiled with have piled on. Two things to remember about deployment tonight as we talk about maps and response times and growing fire services in your great city. Speed of attack and weight of attack. Speed is a neighborhood-based, single-fire unit that goes to everyday minor to modest emergencies and takes care of it with a single unit and a single team of people. Unattended food fire on the stove, auto fire, dumpster fire behind a commercial building, small spot of grass next to a car fire on the shoulder of the road. The weight of attack is when very serious buildings or multi-person rescues occur and you need multiple fire crews and firefighters relatively quickly to keep the problem small and from growing to what the public would call greater alarms. And in your case, that's mutual aid from perhaps half the county and the city of Wichita for something that's become catastrophic. So the speed of attack is to provide that neighborhood-based, fast customer service and the weight of the attack is to mass enough troops, the rare instances a year that you need them. Your role as an elected official in designing fire services is to set policy on what level of outcome you want. And then the deployment analyst, people like me and your fire chief, can say from your desired level of customer service, the risks to be protected. We can back calculate the number of firefighters and the number of minutes on the right kind of apparatus to deliver that customer service. So let's take three largely different choices. A very rural fire department in a mountainous community with all volunteers and 30-minute response times. Their level of service effort is the house of origin burns to the ground, but fire suppression commences before a forest fire can start. Downtown urban metropolitan center with densely packed populations per square mile, success is keeping the fire to the room of origin. Typical suburban, small community success is keep the fire near the room of origin but prevent it from consuming the entire house or business, let some of the personal effects be saved, the people be saved, and certainly keep the fire from spreading next door. All three of those outcomes, or variations thereof, are a time over distance equation because fire doubles every minute it free burns. Every 60 seconds, an open burning fire is doubling in size. So in after too many minutes, the house is beyond saving, the commercial building is beyond saving. Your other policy consideration as you think about response time and customer service goals is as a community evolves from the center outward, you have one fire station in the heart of the community. As you continue to build out your general plan, should all neighborhoods have the same access of time to a fire unit or ambulance? We call that equity of coverage. If everyone is paying about the same tax rate, and if you were to put a second station in over, should they be spread through the neighborhoods so that for what you're paying, every customer gets about the same minutes of response time? So that's what larger cities deal with as you go from two, four, 10, 50 fire stations as you spread those single units out into the neighborhoods to provide equitable customer service. We talked about time and fire doubling. This is a graphic with time on the bottom and fire growth up the left axis. And it just shows in about minutes six to eight that once a fire free burns in a building room, that room goes to what we call flashover. And that's where everything in the room is ignited, in flame. And that very superheated hot gas is now exiting the room into the adjoining rooms and is soon going to ignite the adjoining rooms and thus the entire building. So ideally, from about the time of the fire being reported and immediately being called to 911, the first crew should be on scene in about seven and a half minutes, ideally even faster. And the multiple follow-on crews, trucks for a serious fire, should be on scene within about 11 minutes in an urban area of 911 saying hello and over fire and rescue and police, what's your problem? Coincidentally, for EMS outcomes, emergency medical, left hand is survival percentage. The bottom of the graph, if you're watching at home, is time to defibrillation. If you're in cardiac arrest, you need CPR and ideally automatic external defibrillation within two to four minutes of your heart ceasing to perfuse your brain. If you have some residual heartbeat and perfusion going on and bystander CPR, you would want an advanced EMT and/or a paramedic at your side within about seven to eight minutes. Any longer than that, brain death is starting to occur and in most patients, brain death is irreversible after 10 minutes. So for severe emerging building fires and severe medical patients, we start to arrive at the same time bar of single unit on scene in seven to eight minutes from 911 saying, what's the problem? Follow-on units there a few minutes thereafter. So as we've done fire station planning against your community road network, we've tried to take into account as you continue to urbanize, or perhaps you prefer the word suburbanize, what levels of response times to the emerging neighborhoods do you want to provide? And if your goal is to confine the fire near the room of origin, save some of the building, and if your goal is to get to medical patients in extreme circumstances and time to give them a great opportunity to survive at least to the hospital emergency room, both of those timelines end up at the same spot. Get the first unit there before 10 minutes and then the follow-up units thereafter. In analyzing Andover's firefighting and emergency medical responses today, you're a typical suburban community. You have incidents 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. They follow typical suburban city patterns. You're busier during human waking hours, slightly less busy while people are asleep because frankly, most emergency medical events are driven by humans when awake doing things that humans get hurt, they feel getting ill, and they have the presence of mind to call for help. Your incident volumes are typical reflecting the socioeconomics of this community. You don't have an unusual deployment problem to do something special about. You're normal middle America when it comes to your emergency medical and firefighting demands. Currently, the department does about four and a half calls for service a day. Two-thirds of those are emergency medical events. And that's the nature of the game in the American Fire Service the last 20 years is that as emergency medicine became the health care sadly of only recourse for many under and uninsured populations, the amount of medical calls to 911 has just blown through the ceiling of what the American Fire Service thought was normal. So you go to very many medical calls and they modestly increase year to year as population activities increase. If you look at your incidents again by time of day with midnight being on the left and again 11:00 PM being on the right, this humpback curve over a year shows how you're busier starting with morning traffic through about late dinnertime is when the department is at its busiest. And here's why in the report, we measure statistically how many times you have two or three calls at once. And in Andover, you have two calls at once about 18% of the time. So that means at 3:00 in the afternoon when you're busiest, some of the time, two emergency calls come in. Well, you only have a team and a half. You have five people on duty, three on a fire truck, and two on an EMS squad. So if the squad goes to an EMS call, there's maybe three people left on the fire truck. We'll talk about staffing in a couple of minutes. Here's your demand by, and count by hour of the day. And I said last night, Andover is typical. I just said that again. Yet for some reason, you're busiest on Monday and Tuesday afternoons between 1:00 and 4:00 PM. And there's no demography reason for that other than a little bit of luck or perhaps traffic and workers in the community doing things. Little busier on the weekdays, little slower on the weekends. The point of this graph is however, every hour of every day, you need fire and ambulance customer service capacity. If you look at your response times today in the city limits from 911 saying, what's the problem? The fire crew gets there in 7 minutes and 26 seconds. That's just under our best practices-based recommendation of 7:30. So today, the single unit where it's located in the city, most of the calls are closer to the fire station in your more built-up central area. They get to most calls in 7:30. Out in the fire district, they're getting there to 12:20. In some rural communities, 14 to 15 minutes to 90% of the incidents would be acceptable. Again, many of your fire district callers are a little closer where the population's a bit more clustered, closer into the city. And certainly, the remote ranches and farms out in the corners of the fire district are not seeing 12-minute customer service. Your ambulance company gets on scene in the greater Andover area in 13 minutes and 39 seconds. That's within the context of urban America today. If the ambulance with the paramedic gets there between 12 and 15 minutes, some cases 10 minutes, that's acceptable customer service because the firefighter, advanced EMT or paramedic got there by minute seven or eight to begin critical patient interventions. And then the ambulance paramedic follows up a few minutes later. We then went through a series of maps in the study. I won't go through these in detail tonight other than to briefly describe. Here is a four-minute travel time map. So you just heard me say, 7 minutes and 30 seconds is the desirable goal. Well, by time you take out dispatch time and crew turnout time to put on the mandated protective clothing, get the rig safely moving, from 7:30, you're left with about four minutes driving time of the road network. So one station today in Andover in four minutes covers that light red cluster of streets on the left-hand side of the map. And in the fire district, if there was a staffed station out there at the temporary fire district station, storage location, they would cover some of the fire district in an urban desirable four minutes. If you double that to eight minutes, remember I said the follow-on crew should be there by about minute 11 to something serious? That equates to eight minutes driving time. So from the single station, your single truck can in eight minutes reach the colored area of the map, which is most but not all of the city and about the western half of the fire district. We then looked at volume by location to see if there are any atypical patterns in effect requesting move the fire station sooner rather than later. Is the single fire station properly located? Your highest quantity of calls is in the city limits, not the fire district, excuse me. And it's more in the central city, not out in the fringes yet where the density of development and humans per square mile isn't quite as higher in the core. We therefore said if you were to adopt a more urban community response time policy of 7 minutes and 30 seconds first unit, that's four minutes drive time. Andover is a long north-south rectangle. You can't cover it in four or even six minutes from one fire station. So Andover itself almost says at a minimum for some kind of four or five-minute even driving time, performance goal, you need two fire stations, north and south. And the current fire station can't permanently be either of those. It's too much in the middle. You need a station a little north of the current site and southerly of the current site. If the fire district wanted rural guaranteed coverage and if somebody were to pay for a crew out in the fire district, we then said, okay, before you go that far, what would two city stations cover in eight minutes? And this image is showing two future city stations closer to build out of the city and in eight minutes together, they would cover the darker blue section of that image. We then said, okay, if the fire district wanted a guaranteed rural level of service from one crew in about eight to 12 minutes, somebody found a way to pay to staff that, what would the coverage look like if there were two new city stations that build out of the city, northern third, southern third, and out east in the district, a single staffed station? Consider it a diamond, if you will, three points of a diamond or a three-legged stool coverage model. And at that point, we could get three units in an urban best practices, eight minutes driving time into the core of the city where most of your commercial and employment businesses are located. That would be what we call an effective response force. Someday, three-staffed crews 24/7 would all collapse into the center of the city of Andover in an urban best practices timeframe. And then that's what this coverage looks like again at eight minutes with the darker area, both the city and some of the district covered by three units if that funding could be found. So let's talk about our key deployment findings. The city today does not have a sufficient quantity of engines spaced across the most populated areas. You have five people on duty from one fire station. Given the low number of building fires annually, you continue to use mutual aid and that's what all communities your size do appropriately use, is when you do need the cavalry on something serious, it has to come from a distance. You're down to about eight volunteers in the workforce. We discussed at length last night the decline of volunteer firefighting in America due to many reasons. And you're not atypical in that it's no longer easy to raise great quantities of volunteers whose both family issues and employment issues allow them to drop what they're doing at a moment's notice and run to a fire or EMS call when the bell rings. The city is cross-staffing its area ladder, truck, and squad with two firefighters. Again, five on duty, three on the engine, two on the ladder. You've got a federal grant that's paying for the fifth position. So our first recommendation is secure the funding after the grant to keep five. We then talked at length last night about the safety rule from federal and state OSHA called two in and two out. And in a fire combat interior situation where the firefighters have to be on breathing air with the tank on their back, they have to go inside with teams of two and have a team of two outside ready to rescue them. So if you send five people to an emergency, if all five are available, not on an EMS call, two can go in, two are outside, and you have one that can't be teamed up with somebody else. If you could find the funds in the near-term years to get to six on duty, you would then field two three-person crews, which would be a fabulous operational addition on serious incidents and for simultaneous calls. Because now with six people on the incident, I've got an incident commander required by law, that's the chief officer. I have a pump operator working the pump streams. Six minus two is four. Now I have two two-person teams. I can send two teams inside. I could send one team inside and keep one team outside doing patient care or securing utilities. I have a lot of operational flexibility with just six. And then as we discussed last night, well, what's the ultimate headcount for serious firefighting? And I said in urban America, to really save most of a house or a small commercial building, it's 15 firefighters within about 11 minutes of 911 saying, what's the problem? And I've just asked you to stretch the budget, the resources to try to get to six. So at least on a serious problem before mutual aid can come in from a distance, that two teams of two can be deployed. That's much more effective than what you're doing today. So those options are in the study. I just went over that one. So our master plan recommendations for deployment are start with adopting customer service response time measures. What level of effort do you want, desire to strive to fund as Andover evolves to build out? And these are very long-term recommendations. This isn't next fiscal year. This isn't within the next three-year or five-year CIP, long-term. I would commend you if you could find the money for six firefighters within three or four years, given the nature of the economy and local government in the United States. Continue the volunteer program as long as it's cost-effective. And if you like an urban level of customer service response time, start looking today for a northern and southern pair of sites for a 50-year placement of future fire stations for the build-out of the city of Andover. Very difficult to find land and site stations after the neighborhoods and the commercial projects are all built. Do it to, do it in the near term and then in the outer decades, as you can afford to staff more companies and build the two stations, you have a plan that your successor councils would understand. We've also directed the chief to work on reducing slightly crew turnout times and to work with the county EMS and ambulance authority, and we had a meeting on that today, to lower the EMS critical fire responses to the low acuity medical patients. There are patients unfortunately saturating the 911 system that are not true emergencies and an ambulance only can and is being sent elsewhere in the county to those occurrences. And that would take some of the simultaneous call pressure off of fire. And then in fire administration briefly, you provide, or complements, a wide array of necessary mandated services from fire protection plan checking for new construction to inspections of ongoing businesses for safety under the fire code and public education. Certainly, your staff would like to do more. You know your headquarters staff count is small. And I also want to commend the chief and all of you for funding the fire captain training officer position. Because remember I said on slide one, safety mandates. If you operate a fire department at all, it has to be properly trained, equipped, and records have to be kept as to those training certifications. And you've taken a big step to do that with your emerging career fire department. Police dispatch here along with Butler County Communications and EMS can work on smoothing and quickening the call transfer time and the procedures between the two 9/11 centers. We also made a recommendation that yes, you're paying in effect double. Butler County Communications is also getting tax revenue from this area for 911 dispatch. You have local control and police reasons to keep dispatch here. I just advised you with this recommendation, the option exists to move dispatch, fire dispatch being a regional issue with multiple fire departments at times involved. That's a local choice issue to pursue the details on. Your current fire station spaces are inadequate and you know this in both administrative and operational reasons. In 1992 or four, gee, 94, you built a building for a volunteer fire department. You now are sleeping five people there 24/7, 365. You're training people there. You've got much more equipment and supplies there at the brim. So our other recommendation is to hire an architect engineer to do an assessment of that floor plan. If you decide a two-fire station build-out goal and the economic projections, for the sake of discussion tonight, say that's 20 years out away or 15 years away, you're going to have to do something with the central fire station in terms of not only rehabbing its building systems given its age, air conditioning, heating, electrical plumbing, but also reconfiguring the floor plan to make it more useful for the current number of people in the building every day. Just, the building footprint just wasn't designed for what you're currently doing it. And most fire stations need major rehab at 20 to 25 years. And in my career experience, most fire stations at about 50 years need total replacement because the building codes and the age and the quality of the structure that we originally built have just outlived their useful life. You also again have excellent fleet. You've invested in quality frontline firefighting apparatus and maintenance and that shows. And I've already commended you on your fire prevention system and record-keeping. So other than improving dispatch coordination, which would also ease the after-hours burden or you're going to have to increase police dispatching personnel after hours, the fire department should also formalize and adopt a training program for all firefighters. They're in the process of doing that with a new training captain and instituting the record-keeping as required by law. So what are, what are your steps? You have almost 100-page master plan. I've talked about short-term, easy, low-hanging fruit, work on procedures, work on training, start to do some facility planning thinking. Once you adopt customer service goals, that really drives your council and your successor councils fiscal policy on funding levels of fire services. It gives you a lot to think about over a several-year timeline. We've talked about identifying funding to keep the fifth person when the safer grant expires. Nothing to say you can't keep number five and go right back for another grant for number six for two years. And a lot of departments have been successful slowly adding staff with the first two-year period being a federal grant if you can secure it. And then again, if you're going to adopt a two- or three-station model, three-station if it includes a fire district willingness to pay for guaranteed rural level of service. Start to think about site acquisition as you work with developers in the community. Continue the volunteer program as long as you can get people in it and it's cost-effective. It costs quite a bit to train a firefighter to safety standards and give them personal protective equipment and gear. And to then have them never go to a call or rarely go to a call is also frankly not cost-effective. At some point, you could look at the dollars going into a volunteer program and put it into another career position. So there are cost-benefit trade-offs. There are volunteers don't come free to the fire or law enforcement given training and equipment. Implement the staffing and station recommendations over time as part of your annual budget process and continue to maintain the cooperation you have with county EMS and including shared facilities. If someday they needed to locate another ambulance in the greater Andover area, you're co-locating the ambulance today at your fire station. You could continue those kinds of partnerships. And that's my summary of the project before you. Thank you, and the chief and I are here to take any questions you have.
Council, have any further questions? I know we went a lot further in-depth last night, a little bit. Any comments, questions? We thank you for your efforts. As we discussed a little bit last night, that we're going to bring this down to a little smaller committee level and work on implementing- little smaller committee level and work on implementing some of the measures I know we can tackle first. Long-term planning is something that we'll have to work on and keep an eye on. We did meet with a couple of our county commissioners today to discuss that, and we shared the results of this with them, along, along with the EMS director. There was great discussion, but we've got, we've got a long way to go, so we'll get to it.
Thank you very much for the business and the attention. Good night.
All right, we move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda, items one through eight. Is there a motion to approve those?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items nine-one through nine-eight.
Second.
All right, motion by Caroline, second by Greg, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, we have before us this evening our 2017 amended budget. Again, we discussed that a little bit last night. Would you care to provide us any highlights?
It's basically our normal housekeeping. For example, we paid off the fire truck early, the temp note on it, so now we have to amend the budget to reflect that expense, the transfer from sales tax over to bond and interest. On some of the streets, things that we had originally projected to be doing in 2016 got moved to 2017, so I have to amend the 2017 budget. It's just making sure we get all the correct expenses in the correct year. We've also put in there some items for the amphitheater, the water fund to help pay for the water lines, stormwater to help pay for some of the stormwater, those types of items. What I'm asking tonight is to set the public hearing for December twelfth.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to set the public hearing date for the 2017 amended budget for December twelfth, 2017.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Sherry, to set the public hearing date for the 2017 amended budget for December twelfth. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We want to item number eleven. We have some geobonds, Series A, 2017 action.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see our financial advisor, he was going to try to make it over tonight, but he was going to where he had some tougher questions to answer in Derby and maybe come to give us the good news later on, but he hasn't quite made it here yet. Just as a way of introduction, he called me yesterday and was a little concerned about the sale because two weeks ago Derby had had a sale and got no bids. Now, there were some, there were some differences in our bond issue, including that it was BQ, but we were fortunate to get seven bids today with the low bid for a twenty-year bond issue of 2.96 percent. So he was relieved, I think we're all very happy. I think we have it in the motion up there that it's from a firm out of Memphis, Tennessee, but we consider it a very successful bond sale, but certainly would stand, the bond counselor, I would stand for any questions on it.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I would, based upon the examination of the bid tab and supporting documents, I would move to approve the low bid from FTN Financial Capital Markets of Memphis, Tennessee for the purchase of Series A, 2017 general obligation bonds at a net interest cost of 2.96894 percent.
Second.
All right, motion by CR, second by Chris, to approve the low bid from FTN Financial Group for the purchases of Series A, 2017 geobonds at an overall net interest rate of 2.96894. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point two.
Mr. Mayor, you recall, having gone through this several times, that we have two steps we have to take now to issue the bonds versus the ordinance actually authorizing the issuance of $3,575,000 in general obligation bonds. And then we'll have a resolution, excuse me, resolution after that that describes the form and details of the bonds, including the interest rates that we got today. I'm sure our bond counsel would stand for any questions if you have questions about the ordinance or resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance authorizing issuance of Series A, 2017 general obligation bonds of the city of Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by CR, to approve this ordinance authorizing the issuance of said bonds as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point three, which is the resolution, the aforementioned resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution describing the form and details of Series A, 2017 general obligation bonds of the city of Andover, Kansas, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, I think we have bid tabs for the Prairie Creek Phase Three Water
Steve Anderson, city engineer. About a month ago, we opened bonds for the Prairie Creek Phase Three Improvement Projects. There were two of them. The Water and Sewer Package had a component, the water line construction bid exceeded the petition budget. Our contracts are set up to hold these bids open for a period of sixty days with a five percent bid bond. So in the meantime, the developer resubmitted the petition to correct the budget and allow for the award of the contract. You approved those petitions last meeting, and so we're ready to award tonight. The recommendation is in the form of the motion in the new agenda software. I don't see a reason to read it to you.
Boy, that's nice of you. Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the low bid from McCullough Excavation of Wichita for the Prairie Creek Phase Three Water and Sewer Project in an amount not to exceed $196,283, and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Caroline, to approve the contract with McCullough as presented. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question on it. The, the bid from McCullough is significantly lower than everyone else. Are we okay with that? Is there, is there something we're missing here?
They performed the West Interceptor Sewer Project for us this past year, and their work was just excellent. They're a sound company and have no reservations recommending them. We are protected with multiple bonds, performance payment, and statutory, so we have some financial guarantees for performance.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, the 2017 street rehabilitation project.
Rick Lansford, Assistant Director of Public Works. Mr. Mayor and counsel, every year we do a street rehab project. We set aside about a million dollars a year for this project. The last several years, these came in substantially under that. Our prices have went down again, which is shocking to me, quite frankly, because I thought they'd hit bottom. And on the map, you'll see the areas that we're going to either mill and overlay or just overlay. There are some streets that don't have curb and gutter, we're just going to overlay instead of mill. We are also additionally to what's shown on the map, that's not shown on the map, is some crack repair on Thirteenth Street between Kellogg and Third Street. There are some substantial cracks that have developed on Andover Road. We're going to go in and repair those cracks and prepare them for a future overlay in the next year or so. We, we do this in advance a lot, and it helps with our process. Unless you have any additional questions, I think it's really pretty straightforward. The bids were extremely, extremely competitive, and we're more than thrilled with them.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the low bid for the 2017 street rehabilitation project in, in the not-to-exceed amount of $715,749.43, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
If you don't mind, would you include the, the low bidder's name in that motion?
Okay. You want me to read it?
Would you mind? Would you mind revising your?
Right.
Original motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the low bid for the 2017 street rehabilitation project and award the contract to APAC Kansas Inc. Shares Division in the not-to-exceed amount of $715,749.43, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
And I'll amend as well.
All right, so we have an amended motion and an amended second to accept the low bid for the 2017 street rehabilitation project with APAC Inc. in amount not to exceed $715,749.43, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen.
The form before you tonight is simply an acknowledgement of KDOT's estimate of the fees for the construction engineering for the South Andover Road project. KDOT has changed again their way of doing business. They now have on-call firms that they negotiate a price with rather than going through the whole selection process. Makes it much simpler, and this form just simply gives our acknowledgement that we agree with the fees.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the KDOT work estimate form for Trans Systems, estimate of fees for construction engineering for South Andover Road, Four Mile Creek Bridge to Southwest One Twentieth Street.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris, to approve the work estimate form as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, we have a right-of-way management ordinance.
Many, many years ago, I asked the then-city attorney Norman Manley just what our responsibilities were for right-of-ways and easements and where I could read about that. And he said, well, it's the common law. I said, I'd like to have a copy of the common law. I still haven't seen the common law, but this ordinance is the best attempt for the city to explain what a person's responsibilities are who uses the public right-of-way and what the city's expectations are for that person. It mainly deals with utilities, but there are a few sections in there that deal with, with private use of the right-of-way. It's pretty lengthy, but I, I think it's done a comprehensive job of explaining both the city's expectations and a person's responsibilities when they're in the right-of-way working.
We know what we're going to get into here, I take it?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance amending the city code right-of-way management regulations as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris, to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Last night at the workshop, we presented you with the plans for the Red Bud Trail Park. Tonight, we're here to ask for your approval of the plans and the authority to go out to bid that work. The shelter shown up there on the screen is, is somewhat of a historic character of the railroad that this park sits adjacent to.
Mr. Mayor.
Caroline.
I, I had some concerns about this and I designed, and I shared that with Les last night, so I, I don't know. I think this could be better in the, in utility. I, I didn't know that that look wants to be preserved, but someone who uses these trails quite a bit, and I've been caught in rainstorms, and you want to get under shelter. So when I've been at the park, you know, that I could actually get underneath that roof. And I think the spaces there are great, but like cut through the middle of it or something to where somebody can actually get under that roof and, and use that as a shelter if there's blowing rain and shade rain. Just make it more useful. I mean, there's shade, but it's, I, I just think it can be a better design. So I don't know if we want to go back to them and try to get some space where people can get underneath that roof, opened up through the middle of it, whether it's like a block around each one of those poles and, you know, space in the center or, or how it's done. But I would just think that we could design that in a way that would be more useful to the people using the trail.
Sounds good. Good idea.
Take that.
I can take that back to the architect and see what ideas he has.
I have an idea for you. I'll share with you after the meeting. I just drew it up. So was that a motion to table this?
Yeah, well, it depends on if, if it's, if this is time-sensitive, as long as we do an amendment to that. Otherwise, I'd rather wait and see a new design plan. So yeah, I guess table it unless you're telling me they have to get on this immediately.
Is there a motion, second to the motion to table that? Okay, we have a motion by Caroline and a second by Sherry to table the Red Bud Trail Park Shelter. I guess that would also include to contact the designer and see if there's?
Some modification.
Some modification that could be done to house people underneath it. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are down to member items. Troy, would you like to start us off?
No items tonight, thank you.
Sherry.
No items tonight.
CR.
I would like to thank Citygate for their extensive report. Voluminous, yet very informative, and I, I thought the gentleman that came here to do the investigation was a great fellow. Can't think of his name, of course. And then secondly, the gentleman here, Stu Gary, was a great spokesman, and I, I think it's very effective. And I, I think we have a framework for the long-term well-being of the city of Andover. It may be painful in certain stages, but I think it's all livable. And I, I also conclude that today, things are going pretty well. We have a lot, a lot of things that I think the, the mayor very astutely, particularly yesterday, made mention of, that I, that I concur with his analysis on that. I would also like to thank at least a dozen firefighters for attending the meeting today. Very noticeable, and they obviously are very interested in this process, and I thank them for all their efforts. That's all that I have.
Chris.
No items, thank you.
Caroline.
I would just say I was very impressed with the fire analysis as well and thought they did an exceptional job. And I know that we will continue to work on that and get that committee going and see what we can do to make improvements prior to the twenty-year down-the-road thing.
No items.
Staff, have anything else?
I don't want to talk a whole bunch more. Becky, do you want to mention the Festival of Trees? That's this Thursday, correct? Go ahead.
I'm Becky Wolf. I'm the president and CEO of the Andover Area Chamber of Commerce, and this Thursday, we will have our Festival of Trees Jingle Mingle event, and it's a social, social event. We showcase the trees that are all donated by businesses and organizations. We have fourteen, I believe. So go down to Andover State Bank and at least see them. You know, they're, they're great. But the Jingle and Mingle event is from six to eight. We've got restaurants from Andover and the surrounding area coming in to serve food, and it's going to be a great evening.
Are there tickets at the door?
Tickets will be at the door, or you can get them at Andover State Bank or at the Chamber.
How much are they?
Twenty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
And don't forget about Hometown Christmas on December fourteenth, correct?
And I'd like to remind Caroline, Greg, and Troy that the salary review meeting will be on Monday afternoon. You will be getting a packet tomorrow of information.
Anything else? Let's get out of here.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by- Motion by CR, second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.